Good evening. Time is seven o'clock. Being a quorum president of the Tuxbury Planning Board will bring this meeting to order. First item on the agenda, item B, committee reports.
Any committee reports?
Hearing none?
No.
Tom Planters report. Anna?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I only have three items here. I'm not going to go through all them. Does the board have any questions for me?
I have a question if I could.
Sure.
I know we're supposed to be attending tomorrow night's planning selectmen's meeting, correct?
Yes.
So we're going to be discussing sidewalks tomorrow night. So but we have not really discussed them too much in our meetings, but I guess, you know, we'll have to see what happens tomorrow night, right?
Yeah, so I did inform.
I have a question if I could.
Sure.
I know we're supposed to be attending tomorrow night's planning selectmen's meeting, correct?
Yes.
So we're going to be discussing sidewalks tomorrow night. So but we have not really discussed them too much in our meetings, but I guess, you know, we'll have to see what happens tomorrow night, right?
Yeah, so I did inform. I had previously, before that meeting was planned, I had decided to move this, our discussion, to December 21st to allow for more time for Mr. Fratelli, you and us to meet with Mr. Hammond. So however, the board selectmen would like to meet with the board and themselves to discuss the matter. So I'm just, will be attending. I have a rough list, but it's not complete. So.
Okay. You know, I just, I don't know if I'm sure what they're looking for. I'm looking to get, get us involved more with them and see where we are as far as sidewalks, but I mean, we can always just listen to what they want or what they want or what they propose and because we haven't really discussed it much as a board. So I'm hoping we can do that before the end, before the end of the year and and so forth and so on. So that's all.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment if I could, and it's relative to our meetings, if I could maybe at this point.
Go right ahead.
Well, as you know, we get our, it's a general issue that all of us have to deal with as board members. As you all know, we get our packets on Friday afternoon. Over the weekend, we work on them. But I have an issue with the fact that we're getting emails, and I'm not pointing the finger to anybody, but I think maybe we have to look at the fact that getting late emails and late reports and all that stuff on a Monday afternoon or late Monday morning or whatever. It just doesn't, doesn't cut it. I mean, for myself personally, we all have duties and responsibilities to do with our work and all that. And I know some people probably haven't even seen some of these emails because they didn't come in so late. I happened to see it 15, 20 minutes ago after I completed my look through at three o'clock and realized that I had a couple more emails at 3:30. So I don't know if we can make sure that people are aware that there's a deadline that we should get, try to get the information in so we give us a fair shot at looking at the information, reviewing it, making our concerns well known and be able to give a reasonable, you know, discussion on the topic. Sometimes it's just too late when we get this information. So.
I appreciate that, Mr. Fratelli, and you're a thousand percent right. It's almost like some people don't care when they send it in. Last minute. I mean, an hour, I found out from Mr. Delaney about 181 Pine Street at four o'clock. So.
My point exactly, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I found out about some of the other stuff at three, that was sent at 3:30 at six 45. So but hey. Just maybe if we can make people aware of the fact that there's deadlines, that they should get their information in as soon as possible and it's, you know, it's applicants, it's our staff and everything else. So but whatever.
I mean, we used to have it, if they didn't have it in by a certain time on Thursday, it couldn't be, it couldn't be in the package on Friday. Well, we've extended it to noon time Friday or something like that. And it just gets deeper and deeper. So we're just going to have to say you don't have, you didn't have it in on time. You'll have to, you're not going to have a, be on the agenda Monday. You're going to go two more weeks.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with that too because, you know, even with this 1880 Main Street, they give you a diagram and the only thing I have is I have the diagram on my telephone. You know, and I think you need just a little bit more time. Like what we're all saying, we need a little bit more time to do what we're doing. You know, what's happening right now, and I agree with you all, is totally unacceptable. What, an hour? An hour before our meeting? We got to recite our information when you're already into what you've got already.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Ryder.
I do have a question in regards to, Vinnie, thank you for bringing that up. I'm a bit concerned about it as well. I'm concerned that they're understanding this is open meeting. There are guidelines for information that needs to be posted under the open meeting law and especially now that we are, have the meetings remotely and people are not attending. Getting this information that's potentially affecting a Butters or other residents in town, I have a big concern with that.
Mr. Chairman.
Go right ahead, Mr. Johnson.
I guess it's not that I disagree with, with any of it. It's just, I mean, under a normal circumstances where we have our regular everybody there meetings in the town hall, we always, stuff's always brought in night of. And Mr. Fratelli's comment holds true even in those cases. We don't like that in terms of having to make a decision based on something that's brought in. I mean, it's really up to us how much we want to, how much credence we want to give something given to us at the last minute. I don't think that really changes for these online meetings. But I think Mr. Ryder just raised an interesting point, which is when we have the meetings that are in the hall and everybody's there and all that, new information comes up, that's sort of, you know, that's sort of how the petitioners have always sort of, not all of them, but you know, those who come across all the time sort of just used to, yes, they'll give us a new plan or something will come up. But having it done this way, and I know that they can share it on their screens, but if, if we're not going to let them do that, then I think, then you have to have a set date to say no new information like that. But I just, I'm just curious what happens when we get to a meeting and we start discussing something and there is new information. Are we just going to discuss it and continue the hearing? Because if they say, oh, well, we, we've got a new plan that addresses the last concerns that we had, but I guess we can't discuss it now. Like, that's, that's my only concern. How do we deal with that? Because since we don't have the in-person meetings with people, these last minute things that are coming into our emails are the equivalent of the petitioner walking across in front of our table and handing us new plans or, you know, a letter from a Butter or a picture or whatever it is, you know, that this is the equivalent to that. And if we don't accept and we don't take it into our bargain, how much we want to care about it, I guess, is up to us. But I think that's what this is. This is the equivalent of the things brought in night of meeting because that's not an option now. Because otherwise, we're going to have to continue hearing. We're just going to say, well, we can't discuss the new information because you didn't have it in our packets. We pick them up. And if that's important information, we're going to have to kick you to the next meeting. I feel like that's going to happen a lot though. That's my, that's my worry. That's why I'm asking.
That's why I'm saying we have to do something like, like I stated, and as you just alluded to. Because someday we're going to have a couple of them and we're going to say, well, that's only a minor issue they're bringing up today. I think we all understand that and we allow it to be discussed. The, someone else comes in same time and in our minds, it's a little different. Modifying a plan or something like that. And it's just other people will think we're being, we're picking and choosing. And I don't want the, the public or any of the petitioners to think we're picking and choosing. So we have to have a rule. And if it's not in on Friday, I'd like us to think about it between now and our next meeting, which is actually tomorrow night. We could bring this up at the beginning, no, we can't. Bring it up at the end of the meeting and we will then decide how we'd like to handle it. So if you could think about it and tomorrow evening, we'll, we'll take it up again. Is that all right with the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just have one more comment if I could.
On this package, on this? Yes, go ahead.
I'm not, I don't want to be mentioning any particular applicants. I know Mr. Delaney mentioned an applicant that I was hoping that we didn't have to mention anybody. But this has been going on for weeks and weeks and weeks. Nothing, there's nothing new. But it just so happens that tonight I brought it up. So so I'm not singling out anybody in particular or any, any, any staff member or any, or any applicant or any, or any site. It's just that we need, we need, as a, as a planning board, I think, my opinion, enough time to look at the information that's presented in front of us to make a value decision for, for all of us. And for me in particular, that's my personal opinion. So I don't want to be, you know, go on and on about this, but that's just my opinion. I brought it up.
Well, I think the worst thing, Vinnie, and I appreciate your candor. The worst thing is the fact that we've got three changes today. That's never happened before. I'd never seen that happen before, not like that. But anyways, moving right along. Where are we? Meeting calendar. Mr. McGinty?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Did you still want to talk about the meeting calendar this evening?
So I, we would, we need a vote tonight so that we can set up our January 11th deadlines that will start in December so that applicants will have that dates in for any applications. We do need you guys to vote tonight and then, you know, in the past, we've made adjustments to the calendar. So everyone got a copy in their pocket.
Yep.
Yep.
Anybody have any discussion on the agendas?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one question. I see, Anna, we have January 25th and then a week later, the first. Is that due to the holiday?
Um, yeah, so we were, the holidays in January and February and March as well. And I believe Mrs. Lauer, she reached out to to Eric Ryder, just to confirm his schedule as well. So we're trying to accommodate everyone. Mrs. Lauer put this together.
So what, Anna, maybe we should do this quickly, just go through the months and see if anybody has any, any question about a certain thing or a conflict. January. Hearing none. February. First and 22nd. March. First and 15th. April. 12th and 26th. May. The 10th. June. The 14th. July. The 19th. August. The 16th. September. 13th and 27th. October 4th and the 25th. November 8th and the 29th. And December the 20th. We went through the whole calendar, wasn't, wasn't a question. That's very good.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the meeting calendar for 2021.
On the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose the eyes have it. Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Fratelli?
Aye.
Mr. Delaney?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. There you go, Anna.
Thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And next item on the agenda, sidewalk discussions can be continued till the 21st of December. Robbie, anybody here for, on camera or off camera or ready to talk? Robbie Terrace Way, bond released and as built acceptance has also continued till December 21st. Next item on the agenda, 325 Marshall Street, non substantial change request. Who is Ginsburg, the Hanley?
Yes, Jim Hanley, Civil Design Consultant.
Good evening.
Can I share my screen?
Yes, you may.
All right. Okay, so you can see my, my screen here. Yeah, I'm just going to walk through the couple of changes here. So just to kind of give a little bit of background, if anybody is listening, this is 325 Marshall. We have 38 additional lots, OSRD subdivision approved by the board in earlier this year. I know you are aware that we received some correspondence from the, from one of our Butters of lot of the existing access drive, maybe a month ago, maybe two months ago here we did. So we spent that time working with the Butters to make sure that we could address their change, their concerns regarding the development. And that led us to, to this non significant change that I have in front of me right now. So what I think makes sense is to just kind of walk through the five changes to the plan. Now, it's important to appreciate the changes to the plan here really are changes to the line work associated with the subdivision. Property lines, easement lines have changed. Nothing has changed from a roadway perspective, from a number of laws, from a density, from a impact perspective, nothing of that magnitude has changed at all. So just walking through the changes here, starting on the bottom, left hand side of the screen, this number one here. We've expanded our open space to include, I think, this proposed extension basement that'd be located at the corner of intersection of Terramore Drive, which is our new roadway with Marshall Street. We've, what we've essentially done is provided this area that's kind of highlighted along the frontage of number 349 Marshall Street. We're actually giving them this land as opposed to when we came in front of you in the summer, we were, we provided them with an easement to get through the, to get through a lot and provide them access over our roadway. But we've agreed to give them a few hundred square feet in order to provide them actual frontage on the new roadway. We've also done that for 355 Marshall Street. And then that way it just kind of cleans up any loose ends. So now 355 and 349 will both have frontage on the proposed roadway as opposed to accessing it through any kind of access or anything like that. You probably remember lot one is the previous owner, the existing owner, the person that owned the property prior to the current developer. This here, we have five acres of land. We wanted to be able to maintain that after we took out, after we took out this portion of the lot. So what we did is we just simply modified their lot line in order to provide them with the additional area that they lost, giving it to 349 and 355. So this is just a modification to a subdivided lot line, but the areas essentially stay exactly the same. Then the final thing that we did here was number five. You probably remember that we have a 30 foot wide access to the open space. It was actually up against lot one, went on the approved plan. What we're proposing to do is just reconfigure lot two so that the 30 foot access goes to the north of lot two as opposed to the south. So that's kind of it in its entirety. I'm just going to kind of look through my, my cover letter that I provided a week and a half ago here we did. I think that's it. Yeah. So, so that's it in its entirety. I know that there's been some correspondence flowing back between the planning department and between the applicant and the Butters and their attorneys. And the, the, the applicant currently takes no exception to any of the provisions that the, the Butters attorney had put into place and essentially agreed, you know, willing to make the changes that have been that have been discussed yet. So with that, if you have any questions, I will be having attorney. I think you might be unmuted, Ken.
Board members, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no issue with the, the changes. I know Mr. Hanley just alluded to some of the other emails we saw, but you know, that's fine that the, the petitioner has got some, you know, some agreements with the Butters, but those, any of those requests where we get involved in that or it's somehow, some way limit when things can get done on this, I would be opposed to that because that's between, that's between them.
That's right.
So I don't, I wouldn't want to see any of those things added to the permit as a limitation, but the requests themselves, I have no problem treating them as non substantial changes and granting them. Otherwise, I'm all set.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Ryder?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do not have any questions. I'll agree with Mr. Johnson. I don't want to include anything because ultimately that's the agreement between the, the individuals selling the parcels and so forth. But other than that, I'm all set. Thank you.
Mr. Delaney? Mr. Delaney? You're muted, Mr. Delaney? Mr. Fratelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also reviewed the plans and I have no problem with the change. I did read the memo between the parties involved and they all agreed upon it and signed it. So I'm all set. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Delaney, you'll. Are you surrendering?
Jay, if you hold the base bar down.
We can't hear you. Oh, he knows it. The, and not to reiterate beat dead horse to death. A horse to death. It was like we had to, and I agree. We didn't have to hear all of the stuff between the lawyers, the petitioners, the Butters. We want to see the final plan and why you did it. That's all. And that makes sense. All right. Any, any further question from the board? Any further questions from Mr. Hanley?
I don't. I think, no, we're good.
Okay. Anybody in the, no one in the audience, right?
We have no calls, Mr. Chairman.
I would hope not.
Mr. Chairman, this is, this is under our administrative action.
Right.
No public comment.
I just want to make sure that Mr. Ginsburg and Mr. Ginsburg and Mr. Whoever else is there might want to add something to it.
Can, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank God. I was trying to say, Mr. Chairman, that I didn't have a problem with what they were trying to do. That's between, you know, I agree with Mr. Johnson, Mr. Ryder and Mr. Fratelli.
Very good. Thank you for that, Mr. Delaney.
I won't touch another thing on this computer tonight.
Yeah, right. Was this listed as just administrative action? So it's not even a substantial, no, that's fine.
So, Mr. Chairman, it's a non substantial change. So it was an initiative action. So, yeah.
We have a motion to accept the non substantial change on this 325 Marshall Street.
So moved.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm going to check with Anna, but it may need us to start doing these in two pots now when we first determine that it is a non substantial change and then grant it?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's correct. So the board does the vote on it. That it's a non substantial change because it's technically the board that makes that decision. And then you go and make your vote on the, the proposed changes and if you want to make any additional conditions with it, which we've always been doing. So because you come to our office, but we don't, it's the board that makes the decision if this is non substantial or if it's a modification.
Well, isn't that what we do when we give a vote?
Yes.
That's what I ask for.
For clarification, I'll, I guess, is it easier, Anna, if we just make a motion to agree that it's a non substantial change? That, would that clarify, would that help, I guess?
Uh, yes, that would be great.
That's what I was looking for.
Okay, I'll make a motion then, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Ryder. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. On the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the eyes have it. Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Delaney?
Aye.
Mr. Fratelli?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. There you go.
Right.
Do we need the second one or not? Okay, so a motion to grant the non substantial changes as presented this evening.
Right.
Second.
On the motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose the eyes have it. Mr. Fratelli?
Aye.
Mr. Delaney?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
I think, Mr. Hanley, you're all set.
Perfect. Thank you very much for your time.
Next item on the agenda is Open Space Committee Master Plan Update.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Nice to see you all.
Good evening. If you could introduce it, if the chair could introduce everybody to our board. We can see you here, but you know, officially, go ahead.
Paige, the chair of the open spaces is in here, but I'm here, Paige in pink. I'm a member of the board along with Chris Mullins and Bruce Schick.
Howdy, everybody.
Greetings. What do you have for us this evening?
We have a little dog and pony show.
Oh, boy. Look at this.
Oh, yeah.
Nice.
Let me just fix the camera here. Got a camera on one side and a monitor on the other, so it's a little supplemental. So I'm Chris Mullins. I'm here with Bruce and Paige. We've been serving together on the town's open space committee for just over three years, three years, two months, three years, three months. Thank you all for taking the time to listen to where Tuxbury's plan. Thank you all for taking the time to listen to where Tewksbury's plan stands and all the time you put into the town. We know firsthand how much time goes into things like this, so thank you. And we also owe appreciation in developing the plan and implementing its goals to Mr. Montori and Stefania Gallo.
Thank you for that.
So, the process to build out our current plan started by reviewing and reviving the previous plan and adding a substantial amount of community feedback. We ended up with a roughly 260-ish page document that was truly built around the direction our residents wanted to see the town going. After years of work, the plan was adopted by the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board, and the Conservation Commission in August of 2018. The plan was then reviewed, approved, and accepted by the state this past January, January 31st. And the state will recognize this plan for seven years. As we get closer to the end of those seven years, we kind of restart the whole process. We take this plan, we try to improve upon this plan, and also include even more community feedback going forward. So just respect the live plan with a seven-year gap in between. So...
Gives you a chance to breathe a fresh air.
Pardon?
It gives you a chance to catch your breath.
Well, my mouse ran out of battery, so I had to, before it was on screen, I had to run and fight a double A, so...
Go right ahead. Continue.
Thank you. When we were going about implementing the plan's goals, we realized pretty quickly that it would be more successful the more we worked with other committees and boards, reviewing the town's website and the descriptions of the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board, and the Conservation Commission. There is clearly overlap in some of our shared goals, and we'd like to make use of this overlap more than we have in the past, as well as use these relationships to push more economic development opportunities that really aren't or weren't as visible without looking at the data we were able to gather in developing the Open Space Plan. In addition to giving you updates on how we've moved forward, we're here to help keep the plan as part of your consideration as you go about regular business. We also want you to keep in mind that the envisioning Tewksbury 2037 report and existing town master plan both express a significant need to expand both open space and pedestrian access around town. In January 2017, the committee held its initial visioning session to about 50 residents at the high school. This was to get a sense of what type of improvements residents wanted, where they wanted to see them. And it was truly the foundation of all of the dates to the 2019 Open Space Plan. Further, which was made with an extensive online survey, we received feedback for the plan from 924 individual residents. And for a comparison, the green you see on screen represents the 924 residents giving feedback to that plan in 2017, 2018. And the red represents the average attendance of the 32017 and 32018 town meetings. So like, there was definitely a lot of people giving us input on this plan. We took that to heart. We included it where we could. And we use it to really inform our decisions and really guide us through the process.
Good.
So this is where I jump in. I'm Bruce Schick. I've been working on open space.
Thank you, Chris.
Oh, yeah. Hang on a second.
There you go.
Okay. I got them all on instead of all off. Sorry about that. So anyway, the Open Space Plan directs us all. And when I say all, I mean, you know, it's the residents and the boards and committees who preserve, protect, provide access to maintain the open space we have through stewardship, to reach out to residents, make them more aware of what we do have, to develop a trail network connecting open space within town and connecting to other towns, which is important for grant purposes, and acquire more open space recreational and historical sites. So Tewksbury has done a great job providing active recreation facilities. This is an area that is growing and always being improved. But open space and passive recreation have not received as much concerted attention until recently. So five years ago, walking trails were clogged with fallen trees and overgrowth. There were no boardwalks to accommodate trail walking over wet areas and no benches for peaceful enjoyment. You know, now we've got hundreds of feet of boardwalks and at least 12 benches around town. Access signage, so people know where the open space is, was nonexistent, and there were no trail maps available. All of this has improved significantly and is on the way to getting better. One of the comments that we wanted to make is that if you look around the Boston area, open space is a key feature in many of the most desirable towns in the Boston area. Tewksbury has a great opportunity to leverage its open space to better benefit current and future residents if we're smart about how we think about this low-cost but very valuable asset. We're here to remind you, sorry about that, that you all have an important role to play in making great open space a permanent feature and benefit of living in Tewksbury. We're also here to help in those efforts. Next slide there, Chris. Residents expressed clear support for open space as long as, no surprise here, no new taxes were involved. And I'd like to focus on the no news taxes feedback. In creating this plan, we found that we have a fair amount of open space already, some of which is best left as pure conservation land while the areas that could be used for passive recreation and for mobility between areas of Tewksbury, as we said before, lacked access and signage, et cetera. You may know, you may not know, the town has almost $300,000 set aside in CPA funds for open space. Unless we start acquiring more open space with CPA funds, the funds we have should support the capital needs for improving existing open space to a fairly complete level. We have a deep well of volunteer resources readily available to make all of these improvements possible without great expense to the town. And I might just throw in something today. When I was maintaining Shawshank Launch, which was also known as 2000 Whipple's yesterday and today, and I talked to our landscapers who do my yard into coming over with their truck and sucking up about 60 bags worth of leaves for nothing. So even the commercial entities around town are supporting the open space effort is really my point there. Next slide there, Chris. So 86% of the 924 residents responding to the survey felt that there is a need to preserve open space in Tewksbury. That's a big percentage of a lot of people. And as you know, thank God, 159 acres were unanimously approved for permanent protection at the October special town meeting with spontaneous applause and cheering. Next slide, please. 57% of residents responding to the survey would vote for town-supported land acquisition program. While there are parcels that are privately owned land that we might eventually want to conserve, preferably through conservation easements and donations, our focus in the near term is on working with every development project that wants to create open space to make the most beneficial decisions about the proposed open space. As we develop more concrete potential parcels for acquisition, we may want to consider obtaining a right of first refusal if a target property goes on the market. At the moment, that's just something we're thinking about. One of the best ways to acquire more open space is through the act of partnership with various committees like yourself, keeping open space and access by residents front and center as new development projects come to the table. We all understand and support that preserving and protecting open space doesn't mean we will never have more development. 325 Marshall, which you just talked about, is an example where 35 acres of open space and important new access routes to Rogers Park and two other adjoining parcels could be achieved at virtually no cost to the town. Working with the developers and the homeowners association is the only practical way to go because purchasing the total 53 acres contained in the development would likely not have been approved at town meeting. Let's go back to the no new taxes thing. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Paige, who's going to talk about the potential economic consequences of open space. Ms. Inpink?
Thank you. Okay, just another takeaway from the public input that was received during the update of the Open Space Plan was that 78% of the respondents said that they go out of town to find open space or recreational opportunities. We want to keep our residents here, enjoying the open space in their own backyards. COVID-19, I would say, you know, has improved the activity on the open space network in town, and we'd like to keep that momentum going once the pandemic has been solved. And something that isn't explicit in our charter but is certainly something that all boards and committees should keep in mind is economic development. When residents go elsewhere for open space, they invariably end up stopping by another town's gas station, another town's donut shop, another town's restaurant. So promoting and expanding open space access for residents and non-residents alike enhance Tewksbury as a destination, and it benefits all of us. Economic development is not the sole benefit of open space access, of course, but it is one of them. Next slide, please. So additional key resident takeaways. Again, this plan was assembled over time using public input. And you may recall, we visited your board back in 2018. And we just, again, want to remind you kind of the tenants of the plan and why it's important to have it inform all the decisions that we try to make as things come across our desks. Residents who provided feedback during this session indicated a strong desire for more trails to support hiking, biking, and walking. I think everybody is in agreement about that. And while there is an acknowledged resistance to construction of houses, condos, and apartments, you know, we know that there are opportunities for open space and development to coexist. Smart growth that incorporates the town's natural resources to enhance the residential experience really becomes a win for all. It's because of this that, again, we want to remind you about this. Access to trails and open space adds value to homes. Well-maintained and accessible trails and open space make it easier to live with existing development and take advantage of opportunities that arise as legally permissible development is pursued under town bylaws. While the desire to enhance and improve open space is a high priority, it's not necessarily in conflict with responsible development that takes the town vision seriously. And we all know that. There's also, there are also laws that protect landowners from liability. Whoop. Moving ahead quickly. There are laws that protect landowners from liability who grant access for recreation at no cost. And there are multiple organizations that can offer advice and assistance in creating the legal framework to allow organizations, such as Friends of Tewksbury Open Space, who you may have heard of, to build and maintain trails at no expense to landowners. Okay, Chris, let's jump ahead to some additional plan accomplishments that we'd like to share with you. Part of the charter of the Open Space Plan is to reach out to the community to educate about and engage in the bounty of our lands. We've brought multiple events and presentations to the residents through partnership with the Tewksbury Public Library. Hopefully, some of you have bailed yourselves of some of those programs. And we've run out of fingers, really, to count how many residents say, "I've lived here all my life, and I never knew about these places." I'm sure, I think even some of you on the board have said that once you saw the wonderful trail maps we have now. We know there's an appetite by the residents for getting out. It's been amplified by the pandemic. And educating our residents about these wilderness treasures really creates a sense of value, pride, and ownership in the community. And we also want to remind you that there's a Tewksbury Trails Challenge going on right now where residents are going out and enjoying all the different trails in town. They're taking photos of their families enjoying the open space, and they are participating in a raffle of donated items from local businesses. So there you go, open space and economic development working together. Next slide. Chris? Oh, and there are some people actually walking. You can see it. Okay. The Open Space Plan, Bruce mentioned this earlier, clears the way for grants which will provide funding to enhance the infrastructure of access for residents. Tewksbury has benefited from an REI grant to buy materials to construct boardwalks, benches, and kiosks on the Bay Circuit Trail, and also a cultural council grant, you may recall, to install 10 pollinator gardens throughout the community. Eligibility for a mass trails grant is on the radar. Essentially, it's a complete streets grant for trails. So providing funding for trail development, engineering, and maintenance, again, at little to no cost to the town. Always attractive. Next slide. And Bruce touched on this as well. A priority goal of the Open Space Plan is the permanent protection of open space parcels in Tewksbury, expanding existing open spaces and ensuring access for residents. And of course, you'll recall the 159 acres that were protected at October special town meeting. Residents enthusiastically passed it, and they recognize the value of open space and these actions. Okay. Slide. All right. Look at that. So CPA funding has been approved, and much work is already underway to replace this bootleg bridge over the Heath Brook in the Chandler Well Fields. When completed, the new bridge will enable completion of the Bay Circuit Trail from the library to the Billerica border. The bridge on the right is an example of the type of bridge that's proposed. And again, we want to highlight the partnerships with town staff to make this happen. So lots of things that go into the consideration of putting in a proper bridge like that, both for wetlands protection and for safety of residents. But we want you all to know that people are working very diligently, on staff and as volunteers, to improve the condition around the community. Next slide. You may recognize some of these folks. Friends of Tewksbury Open Space Volunteer Group has rejuvenated Rogers Park after 25 years of neglect. PHOTOS volunteers maintained Shawshank Launch, which has been improved with CPA funds and through help from the Tewksbury Memorial High School International Club. You see Selectman J. Kelly's in there, among others. So again, you know, showing what's possible, what now we can provide as creation space for our residents on safe trails. Really exciting and very well received. Next slide. And these are just some examples of Boy Scout Eagle Projects and Girl Scout Gold Projects, which have been completed under the supervision of town staff as well as open space and Recreation Committee members and PHOTOS members. Open space has actually become the go-to place for scouts to participate in their community, which we find very exciting because that means another generation of residents values our open space properties, has an interest in creating access, maintaining them, and utilizing them. So that's extremely gratifying. Next slide. All right, so what you're looking at here is a map of the Bay Circuit Trail. The Bay Circuit Trail runs from, well, you can see, the North Shore all the way around to the South Shore. Open space does not just benefit Tewksbury residents. It connects us to a larger ecosystem of trails and, by default, tourists. Working with Andover's Trails Committee, 1,000 feet of new boardwalk now connects Tewksbury to the Bay Circuit Trail in Andover. It's now possible to go from Livingston Street Rec Center to the Merrimack River and beyond, mostly on wooded trails. With the support and assistance of Stefania and Mr. Montori, we are now engaged in what looks like will be a successful conversation with National Grid to address being able to show trails on maps crossing under power lines at Bly Street and Marston Street. Once we've got written permission from the state hospital as well to construct some boardwalks, we'll be able to complete a casual walker trail through our community from Billrica to Andover. And then, once the Billrica leg is complete, the Bay Circuit Trail will officially be shown as going through Tewksbury, which is very exciting because, as you can see, it is a missing link in a very important regional trail. That's my part.
So as the, as the Open Space Plan, the envisioning Tewksbury Report and 2016 Master Plan bring up, residents want access to open space and ways to walk around town. Trails are substantially cheaper alternatives to sidewalks and a good addition to a pedestrian network. The way to look at it is sidewalks are part of a pedestrian network, but a pedestrian network by itself is not just sidewalks. With that said, the Open Space Committee is also keeping our eyes on the town's future sidewalk implementation, as that could offer opportunities to create trailheads that tie into existing open space in surrounding neighborhoods. And expanding and connecting to them, there's potential to use our trail network to bridge some gaps in town as a less expensive alternative to traditional sidewalks and pedestrian infrastructure. The Open Space Committee wants to remind you that public access to a, to new open space for passive recreation is a key objective of the Open Space Plan. This objective will be better accomplished if all committees and boards keep this in mind as matters come up for consideration. And just a little bit of an aside here, this does briefly talk the economic development portion, but as part of Tewksbury's Hazard Mitigation Plan and Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Plan, the community has identified flooding as its number one risk. So we'd like to point out that open space does capture precipitation and can help produce stormwater management costs. The Open Space and Recreation Plan sets out a pretty robust set of goals to accomplish its objectives. Accomplishing these goals for our residents is more efficient if the effort is shared. It can be accomplished if the town continues to leverage its pool of volunteer resources who are willing to contribute and commit their time and talents to make Tewksbury a better place to live and work. The Open Space Committee will continue to represent the Open Space Plan, which represents the interests of our residents. And we'd like to partner with the, with the board to take advantage of every opportunity to preserve, enhance, and provide access to the natural environment of the town. And if you take away, you know, anything from this presentation, please keep the plan and the resident feedback that made the plan in mind, as we do. And with that, we're happy to take any questions.
Very good. Paige, Chris, and Bruce, excellent, excellent plan, and I like what you've done, well documented, and you have all your, everything ready to rock and roll. Nice pictures. I like that bridge. That's pretty attractive. Very attractive. All right, board members, Mr. Fratalla.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Paige, and Chris, and Bruce, thank you very much for what you do. Sometimes you do things and no one appreciates you, but I do because I walk the town a lot. I have a new puppy that I have about a year or so now, so I'm walking all the trails in town. I found a lot of them, and they're excellent, excellent trails. Credit to you guys and what you do as far as volunteers to get that done. So I thank you personally, and my dog thanks you as well, so.
I have a question. Have you found the trail above Bly Street?
No, I haven't, but I'll go next.
Yeah, there's the access, which isn't marked yet, unfortunately, is at the second fire hydrant on the right when you come up the street, right between two houses. It looks like it's on somebody's yard, but it isn't. And you go in there and hit the Andover border, and you can catch the 1,000 feet of boardwalks they built.
I have found the one down off of South Street, which is actually in Andover, but very nice as well.
Right. Yep.
So, but, so I had a couple of questions for you, and there are a question about the bridge construction you guys are looking to do. So, so have you guys, you guys reach out to volunteers for that mostly, or how do you get that done?
The ones that have been built so far have been built by volunteers. Mr. Montori's gotten involved and has made a priority out of getting Chandler Wellfields brought up to snuff, and right now, he's, you know, driving the process through town resources. They're, they're going to hire an architect that I brought to the table through the Appalachian Mountain Club, and he's done the design that you saw there. That's actually a photo of just another bridge that's similar to the one that he's proposing for us. So he, they, they're looking to hire him to design the project and get it through, but also to be responsible for the construction. I was just out there with the town engineer and the head of facilities to review the site plan with him. So that's how it's going to get done this time around, and there, there may be some volunteer component to that, I'm sure.
Okay. So what I was suggesting is maybe that you reach out to some of the trade schools, like a Shawshien Tech. I know we have used them extensively to build a home down on South Street. Did a lot of work for us down there, and they do great work. I know they have a missionary department. I know they have a construction department. I'm not sure if they have a landscape department, but I can't see why kids couldn't be building bridges as well as homes. So that may be an option for you guys and a volunteer effort. I'd be loved, I'd love to get involved as well, so call me in.
Okay.
So, so Paige, you mentioned the fact that a lot of the people go out of town.
Yes.
So where do they go and why? Was that question asked at all?
You know, what we found is, and I understand, this was during the process of just collecting information as we went through the plan upgrade using NIMCOG was our, was the consultant, of course, helping us. People go to the surrounding communities. They go to Andover, they go to Chelmsford, they go to Billrica because there are what they perceive to be marked accessible trails. They did what we had here as a resource. So we were able to use that information. Now, when you go to the town website on the open space page, you can see maps that have been made available for the community. We have map packets that are available at the library, just, you know, obviously, the library's closed now, but map packets that people can just ask for. They can use their phones and access the map. So from the time we were building, revising the plan, if you will, to now, I think we've improved that metric quite a bit. But to this day, when we participate in the new resident forum that's at the library every year, we have people come up to us that say they, they grew up in the community and had absolutely no idea. So this is where having visible trailheads is important, having, let's call it defined, but natural parking areas are valuable, and also having, you know, those pedestrian pathways that lead basically to these logical extensions so that people say, oh, I know where this trail is, and it's, they're not hidden any longer.
Yeah. Well, I parked down on Livingston Street, and you walk the trails down there, which are great, but Mr. Ryder was the one who told me about the Pinnacle Trail up off of Pinnacle Street. So I've been walking along, I've been down to Rogers Street Park, and I live in that area, so I do walk to Rogers Street Park. I wish it was a little bit bigger to give me some more exercise, but.
Working on it.
I think there may be some more land down there that we could probably get accessible to, so hopefully that's, that's in the future, but.
And, and Mr. Fratalla, to your point, the more people that walk our trails, the better our trails will be. Tewksbury suffers from a fair amount of dumping and other activities on our open space lands. That more residents being out on those trails would really help to, let's just say, push out the, the less positive use of that land by having more people out there.
Yeah. Well, I'll end, I'll end it with that, but I just want to thank all three of you for the work you do and the whole committee, and, and I'm in if you need any help, so thank you very much.
We appreciate it. We, we thank you for all that you guys do, too. It's, it's a tough road.
Thank you. I think we lost Mr. Fowler in the midst here.
I think we did. I'll do it until he gets back. Ryder?
Thank you, Steve, vice chair. Again, echo Mr. Fratalla, thank all three of you for everything you do. As Mr. Fratalla stated, I do walk the trails. COVID was, as you stated, Paige, it was good for getting out, where, you know, my family was going stir-crazy, stuck inside, so we get out as much as we possibly could with the dogs and enjoy the trails. I was amazed by them. I think everything that you guys have done has been amazing and, you know, continue to do the work you've been doing, and if I can help in any way, I'll try and squeeze an afternoon or an hour or something into my schedule. It's a little crazy, but let me know when something's happening, and I'll, I'll, I'll jump in if I can, but I, I agree with, with Vinnie in stating the, the trade school would be a huge, huge benefit. There are some really talented young kids that this would be a great opportunity for them to showcase their work. As you see, some of them are with scouts, but I think this would be another opportunity for them to really get out there and show their trade that they're learning. Thanks again for all the great work you guys do.
Thanks. Mr. Ryder, Mr. Delaney?
I'm going to echo the same as everybody else. The only thing is, I don't do, the only walking I do is when I'm on a golf course, but after seeing the pictures of this thing tonight, maybe I will start walking some of these trails. I want to thank you very, very much for your effort. It's, it's quite a project, it's quite an ongoing. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you very much.
We definitely appreciate that, and the reason we decided to come and talk with you is because, you know, we have a 260-page plan that we're paying attention to, and we realize that we can't do it alone, and we definitely need, when projects come before you, you know, to keep this in mind, that, you know, if there's an opportunity to add open space to the, the inventory, you really are the key to, you know, getting a lot of that open space made available and, and access when projects come to the table. You know, I'm thinking of the Jones, Jones Farm project where Kyle Boyd negotiated access through the side of the property, and they built a nice little trail that gives everybody in the neighborhood access to the, the state hospital lands. And further, I went over and talked to the people there, and the, the marketing folks said, the third question everybody asks when they come to look at the apartments there is, how do I get access to the trails? And right now, they have no way to get access to the trails on the other side of, of the brook, except to go out and walk around East Street. But we're, one of the projects we've asked the hospital to approve is to rebuild an old bridge that connected to the, the backside of, of the Jones Farm apartment so that they'll have, I don't know, beautiful trail access to the Bay Circuit Trail and, and over into the Pinnacle Trail and over to the hospital trails on, on trails. So literally, we're trying to help people, you know, make their developments even better. I keep saying is that, you know, I have a real estate background, so I appreciate everything that the real estate community is doing. And trails are a big part of what makes this town a desirable place to live. We just need to do a better job of connecting both the real estate developments, the real estate that exists, and the open space we have. Hence the reason we're here.
Yeah. Look for some real creative options.
Is that Mr. Delaney?
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman's on a break right now.
I'm all set, so we'll go to Mr. Johnson.
So, you know, obviously, everybody's already thanked you guys. I mean, the presentation was impressive, and obviously, all the work you do is, is as well. The, the one thing I'll note on the presentation was that map that shows that, you know, that we're not connected, or we don't show us connected, but Andover does. That, that, knowing my feelings about Andover, that I've made very clear in many, many meetings, that upsets me, and I want, I hope that that will be able to be rectified very soon so that we can not be the missing link in that, that map. So I hope to see that, that completed and that, that unfortunate rectified.
You know, Steve, that's a very valuable point because that also extends to things like our rail trail, which is part of, of the plan as well. Because we have the ability to connect to a larger regional network, we then have the ability to go after larger grant dollars. So that is, is a wonderful thing for us. So again, informing, you know, as projects come along, hey, have you thought about, hey, by the way, the property next to you is part of a trail network that the whole town vision wants to try to enhance? So you're right, you're right.
Well, and I think, and Chris kind of mentioned it earlier, but the other thing, you know, a while back, we kind of worked on like a town center plan committee. And one of the things that I mentioned at the beginning had been a way to sort of connect up the sidewalks, potentially, you know, the, what I saw at the time was to go through where the North Street School is now, knowing that it was going to go away, and have it connect up, you know, through the backside of that into where the soccer fields go, which eventually comes out up near where the senior center is. And then ideally, connect it back up to sidewalks that go down by the library and then back to the town center. So you get a little bit of everything. You get regular sidewalks, you get trails, but you get ultimately the biggest thing is you get a giant loop back up to town center, the senior center, the library, you know, and, and the fields, obviously, it, it's not a specific thing, it's just the field, but, you know, those four sort of sections as a way to sort of connect out some, some big points in and around the town center. So it is, the sidewalk and the trails certainly could be, you know, better connected or better used when they can connect in someplace. So that's nice, I'm glad you guys brought that up, too.
Yeah, just to, just to. Sorry, but just to comment on that a little bit, I work in transportation planning and engineering, so both on a professional side and a residential side, you know, I'm always thinking about mobility. And for a lot of municipalities, residents in a lot of municipalities, people can certainly get fixated on sidewalks as, as just as they're typically defined. I'm a huge proponent for sidewalks. I love sidewalks, honestly. I'd love to see them everywhere, but shifting that way of thinking from sidewalk to pedestrian network can also introduce more creative plans and potentially other uses for open space where we can kind of piggyback on, you know, sidewalk access and open space. It's really that middle ground that we're able to, you know, introduce and, and really develop if we play our cards right. And that, and that's one of the things where, you know, we can bring things up, we can talk about things, but it's, it's really, you know, it's a group effort, it's a town effort, it's a town board effort, like, everybody needs to be, you know, all hands on this to really, you know, push it, push it down the road.
All right, if no one has anything else, thank you guys again. That was really great. I'm glad we had anything to give you guys. Thank you again.
Thank you for taking the time to listen. We appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you. Take care.
As we're still waiting for the chairman to come back, we have to move on to agenda item B8, which is 1023 and 1029 East Street Concept Plan Review. Do you have anybody with that?
So I just wanted to add Mr. Johnson.
So I just wanted to add, Mr. Johnson, the chairman is having technical difficulties. So Dorrington is assisting him.
Okay, very good. All right. So do we have anybody here for 1023 and 1029?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's three of us here. Dick Cuco from Woodland Design, Andy Street from Civil Design Associates, and Attorney David Plunkett. Just going to give a brief background on the project. As the only one that was on the board, I believe, at the time was Mr. Fowler. Property sitting on 1023, 1029 East Street. Back in 2007, the planning board approved a 26,000 square foot industrial building that took just the entire site and had about 87 parking spaces. To go further back in the history, the property was subject to a mass contingency plan to clean up some automobile fluff that had been buried on the site when there were two residential homes situated in that area. The Con Hall has been working on it for about the last 15 years. The area was cleaned up through the mass contingency plan. And the plan that Andy has up on the screen now was what was proposed back and approved back in 2007. Well, the economy kind of took a sideways turn, and the need for industrial space was pretty limited. And so we never went forward building the project. There's been some proposals brought forward, I believe, in the last couple of years to rezone it for some senior housing, which was unsuccessful. And now we have a applicant who has got a purchase and sales agreement for the property for much less intense use on the property, which Andy will go over in a minute. But I wanted to bring the board members up to speed who hadn't been on the board at the time. I think, Mr. Johnson, you might have been on when we came in for some permit extensions.
Most likely. Not '07, but I came in in 2010.
Yeah, we probably came in for one extension. And, but anyways, the market wasn't there. So now we have a use that we feel is a really a good fit for the land. It doesn't overtax the land. It doesn't cause transportation issues with overburdening traffic on a busy road. Excuse me. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Andy to walk you through the logistics of the site. And then I believe Mr. Plunkett will also be speaking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Dick. So just kind of piggyback on what he said. I mean, this is about a 12-acre piece of land over on East Street. This is wetlands, a good chunk of this here, really surrounding the entire development area. We've got one curb cut today that provides access to this. And this is really a gravel landscape, very flat up in where we're showing this development here. So the project would be, it's, really, we're showing it as a three-phase project. But the real intent here is this piece in the middle, which is a 3,200 square foot, two-story structure, of which I have the architectural renderings that were submitted. And I'll bring those up after. But, so relatively small building that's surrounded by parking. We have about 60 standard parking spaces, which are the town's bylaw. And then we have 14 spaces down in the bottom section of the page, which will be oversized for larger vehicles. All of this will be accessed by two curb cuts. We'd have one on the, towards the bottom of the page and one further up here that will allow trucks to come in and out. It'll be, right now, it's going to be a gated access to make sure that only employees and people trying to do business here are getting in and out of there. And this will, of course, be designed to meet fire department standards. So this piece in the middle here with the building is what we're considering phase one. The applicant, the intent is to come in with this entire three phases and get approval for it. But phase two and three wouldn't be built out till later date if the need came up to support the operations at this facility. So, but phase two is the piece at the top of your page. This is another, how many spaces is this? Sorry, I lost track of my notes here. But we have another 20, 30-somewhat parking spaces here with another access drive that would connect to phase one in the building and the parking here. And then phase three would be back here. So initially, this would be just a gravel area. There's some parking spaces here as well, but it'd just be gravel. And then phase three would be to pave that section. The utilities would tie in on East Street. In stormwater, the intent would be to design it to be able to manage the stormwater from all three of these phases. So it'd be designed and built as if this was going to be built out fully, so that if and when these additional phases move forward, they wouldn't need to update the system and modify it, assuming it's all still functioning appropriately. So the, we're trying, I'm working with Ann a little bit on what permits we might need through this board, but there's the use and things like that we're working through. But we certainly need an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission as well. In addition to, this board will be meeting December 1st at an IDR meeting to discuss the same concept. And I think just to kind of wrap things up, I'll pull up these are the architectural renderings that were included in your package. So, you know, the intent here is to allow this to serve the operations of the facility. But at the same time, as I'm sure you all know, on the other side of East Street's really a single-family home. So you have kind of a commercial side of the street and then a residential side. So this building will serve the purposes. It has some garage bays to allow vans and things like that in. But the general look is that kind of more or less fit in with the residential character. So I think, I think that's it for me. Mr. Plunkett, if you'd like to chime in at all, certainly feel free. And I'll certainly be available for questions after we get to the end here.
Mr. Plunkett, you're still muted.
How's that? Okay. So the same thank you to Andy and to the board for a lot of this opportunity to present the concept plan. I have in the office with me tonight Jose Rocha, who is the, Jose's family is the owners of the business that's currently on Main Street, American Gutter. And we've been working with the town the last several years, a few years, to do whatever permitting is necessary to provide for the continuation of the business in town. I think of note would be that when we went before the ZVA to get certain special permits for the parking of vehicles, at the hearing, there were, I think, 25 letters from members of the Tuxbury Business Community attesting to Rocha family and, you know, their stature within the town, in the business community. And this would be a very good plan on a number of fronts here. One, it's a good ability to have the current business moved to this location, which is what the, when we've been in discussions with the town, was that they wanted to try to find a location that would be in an industrial zone more appropriately for the business operation, rather than on the Route 38 corridor. And I think that this would be the, whether the town gets the benefit of having this business that's been in the community for 25 years, it still remains in the community. And it also gives the Rocha family the opportunity to expand the business, which has limitations due to the limitations of the smaller location that they have on Main Street. It also allows Mr. Rocha to consolidate under one business operation, the American Gutter operation and the JR Transport, which is located in another area because of the limitations at the Main Street site. So, you know, I think from the presentation that was given to you by Dick and Andy, showing that, you know, this really works at this site, that it would be a good complement to the area. It would be a good use of the premises and allow, again, a local business to stay in the town and the opportunity to grow. That's it. Again, Mr. Rocha is here in the office with me tonight. So if there's any questions, also directed to him relative to the family business operation.
Now, Mr. Chairman, just a little follow-up on what their intent is, too, is that you basically won't, this is sidewalk on East Street. And then what we're proposing to do behind the sidewalk is put up a vinyl fence, because they always gate their property at night, so people aren't coming in and out of there. It's not the type of business where you need to come in to, you know, purchase a product. So it's basically their employees and vendors. And so that gate will be, the gates are closed at night. And then they want to have another soft buffer. And they like to have, as you see, their site on Main Street, they have all of arborvitae trees. So I was talking to Mark Rocha today, and I said, well, we're going to put the arborvitae trees up. What's the need for the fence? And he said, well, the snowplows come out and they push the snow up there and they do damage to the trees. So when you're, when this site is developed, you're driving by there, it'll be well-shielded from any of the residential properties across the street and will be aesthetically pleasing from the road. And as the trees grow up, you may not be able to see the building in a few years. But we think the building is still very attractive for something that is going to be put in an industrial zone. I just wanted to add that into our presentation. And we'll get into more detail when we actually get to our definitive plans. Thank you.
I can see the chairman is back, but he's on, I'm not sure if he's still having technical issues. So if he steps back on, I'll just, I'll throw it to Mr. Ryder first. Is Mr. Ryder as well? We'll start with Mr. Delaney. I can see Mr. Delaney on the screen.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the, I like the plan. I like the looks of the rendering, all of that. But my concern, I guess, is with all the parking spaces and so forth I see, I don't see anything for handicap, for handicap parking or any of that. And in the building, when you go into the building, I guess this is something you're going to have to think about. The building, is it handicap accessible? And can they get to the second floor of this building? I guess those are the biggest concerns. I don't see any handicap parking, and I don't see any handicap accessibility to the building and to the offices or whatever. Where this is a commercial business, I think there should be something.
Yeah, Mr. Delaney, you probably can't see it on the screen. I don't know if you can circle it, Andy, but right opposite the, that's the handicap parking spaces for the building. And there is no need for public access to the second floor. So the, you know, the bottom floor would have the handicap access, and there's no need to have handicap access to the second floor, because that's only a area that's utilized by the staff and the office folks in the building. I think you're scrolling up here now. You should be able to see it now. Right opposite the word, two-story, you can see the handicap spaces are right there. So those are also functions of the building code. You know, based on the size of the building dictates how many handicap spaces we have to have and what handicap access we're required to have.
So what you're saying to me is that if a handicap person comes in, they go into a garage? Or they have a bathroom in the garage? Or is there going to be some type of conference room or something on the first floor for them to be in?
Yeah, the whole first floor is not garage. So there's this public area, you know, not that we get public coming in, but basically, this, when you look at the highlighted one on the left, you can see there's a men's room, there's a ladies' room, there's quite a bit of area that's not included within the garage area. So the first floor has all of the amenities that we need to have, excuse me, for anybody that would require them.
Okay, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Steve, can you hear me?
I can.
Oh, good. I was totally frozen. I was in my, 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 my computer was in Antarctica. Anyways, thank you for carrying on. If you'd like, would you like to continue this? Because I don't, I've only been watching it for the last 10 minutes, and I didn't want to interfere. So if you would like to continue. Yeah, why don't you finish, yeah, why don't you finish this one? That way, I'm not going to do something that's already been done.
Not a problem. Mr. Ryder, you're up.
All right. Thank you. I was frozen for a minute as well. Thank you. I did have a couple of questions. One of them, Mr. Cuco answered with the fencing, understanding that you are, this residential across the street, so that would shield any of their equipment behind the fence. My other bit of concern is somewhat of the phasing of the rear parcel and having that just being a gravel lot. Understanding the requirements with the MS4 requirements and the material that's ultimately going to be brought off that gravel lot if it's used, that will affect the overall condition of the existing phase one. Is that something that that can be phase one and then reversed phase two to that back lot in phase three being the other parking spot? Is that in, along with that, what is phase two parking for? Is that ultimately going to be used for this business or another component?
Well, the anticipated expansion of the business. Right now, I was talking to them today with the, this being gutter season, they probably could have used another 15 crews. So if you've been by their facility, they have quite a few of these, like, small Ranger pickup trucks with the ladders on them, and the crews go out. So, you know, right now, the business would kind of get the parking to accommodate the business that they have right now. But they're hoping to expand the business. And if they do so, they'll need that additional parking. So I think what Andy was getting at is, we don't want to build a stormwater system and then have to move it. So what we're planning on is putting the stormwater system where it'll be when all three phases are completed and then work our way to it. If that makes sense.
I understand. That makes some sense. I'm just concerned of, obviously, having a gravel lot behind that's going to be accessed onto pavement and ultimately out onto East Street. So I'm just a bit concerned with that. Can that be changed to a reclaimed asphalt that will, if ultimately is going to be turned into a parking lot, that will help your sub base?
That's a good question. Yeah, we'll look at that. We'll be happy to look at that.
Okay, that's going to mitigate any carryover of debris out into the parking lot that are out of the East Street and take care of any issues with your basins or your chambers within the property. And lastly, that front green space, as you stated, you're looking at doing some arborvitae's up close there? Is that something that we could do? Or you could do something a little lower, plant things along that, where that is one of the main thoroughfares into town?
Well, like I said, they will be adjacent to the sidewalk. When you see the proposed concrete sidewalk, a couple of feet in back of the sidewalk will be putting up a six-foot vinyl fence. Behind the vinyl fence will be putting the arborvitae. So you'll see them over the fence, but the fence will protect them from snow and salt. You'll see them over the fence, but the fence will protect, the fence will protect them from snow and salt. We learned the hard way. We reversed that on the other site and had to replace them several times. So we kind of learned the hard way.
Okay, I was just, yeah, I was just looking to make sure that, as we stated, it is another parcel down the road. That this is one of the main, other main thoroughfares into town. And we want to make sure that it is kept up as their other parcel would be. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
When we come in for the next meeting, we'll have a nice rendering of what that fence and vegetation will look like.
Thanks, Mr. Cuco, appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder. Mr. Fr-
Mr. Chairman, vice chair, most of my questions were answered. I had a question on the actual phasing process and how long you expect that to take? And, and when do you expect this to happen or start?
Well, we'd like it to happen real quick. But, you know, the business, the business model will, will, will probably dictate that. But as you know, Mr. Fattalia, the permits are good for three years. So if we didn't get it done by then, we'd have to come back and ask for an extension and tell you what our, how our business model is going.
Yep, I realize that. I just don't want to see it hanging out there for three years while under construction. But, you know, I'm sure it won't because he's got an actual business there. So, you know, I'm all in favor of this. I like the concept. I like to see the business staying in town. That's, that's awesome. You know, one of my questions was earlier was you asked it, who was the potential tenant? Our tenants? So if we can keep him in town, that'd be great. And my one question was for the, was about the garage doors. But so what, we have cars coming in and out of there or trucks coming in and out of the garage doors?
Well, you really don't see them from the road.
So, but I see them on the plan.
Yeah. But if you, if you go back at the site plan, Andy, can you show where they come in from? That's, that's on the side of the building there, Mr. Fattalia.
Yep. So will you be storing vehicles inside or?
Mr. Fattalia, Jose Roach is here with me in the office. And that's more for the trucks to come in and get, gather the materials that are going to be in storage in the, in the basement area. So it's not going to be, you know, the trucks or vehicles are going to be going in now. It's going to be more a matter of backing up the, you know, get the materials necessary for the, for their, their job that they're going to. And in relative to the timing, this is something that we're looking to do an immediate of the first phase here and be the relocation of the American gutter business into this site. And the JR transport business to this site immediately upon the completion. So this isn't something that, it's just some tentative plans with some unknown prospective tenants. This is business ready and waiting to get going and move into their new location here within town. As you say, it's a great benefit to the town to keep a business in the business with the sterling reputation that the Roach family has.
Sure. So just an idea, how many, how many vehicles will be coming in and out on a regular basis? Do we have any idea how many trucks he has currently?
What do you have now? Well, right now there's 35 vehicles and then the five or six. Five vehicles for the JR transport.
Okay, all right. I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much, appreciate it. Good luck.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes, I'm all set.
For me, everybody's, you know, I think it's a, it's a good looking project. The one, the things that I'll be looking at when it probably comes in, depending on what you can or can't see from the, from the street. And I think, you know, we've done this on some of the others like this where, you know, just some of those amenities that, you know, break up the way the building looks, it all depend on what you can see. I think if there's going to be the fence out in front, just it's going to be important that the fence is a really good looking fence. If it's going to run all the way down the front of the property. Like we mentioned, you know, this is the commercial side, but the other side is, you know, residential. And it is sort of a gateway pot into Tewksbury. So we want to make sure that it looks as good as possible. And then lastly, that phase two section, if that's going to stay, you know, for a later date, I'd, I'd, I'd want that section to at least be kept up, you know, you know, some, you know, with some sort of, I don't know, whatever you have to put in there. I just, it's, I don't want it to be, you know, sort of just a mess next to it until it finally gets dealt with. You know what I mean? So just keep that in mind. But other than that, I, I have no issue with the, the concept as presented. Is there anything else from the proponents?
I have nothing further at this time.
Nothing from me, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. All right, thank you all. I will turn it back over to Mr. Fowler now.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next item on the agenda, item C, 913 East Street. We have a, we have a comment from them, an applicant requested a continuation till 1221. I hope no one has Christmas parties on the 21st of December because it's going to be a very sad day.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Don't we still have that 1881 that got slipped in late?
That's not, that's, that's the last item on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay. So 913 East Street is continued till 1221. Next item on the agenda is item D, yes?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. May I just ask for a time for that continuation? Did you say seven o'clock?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't hear it, so thank you.
No, I didn't, I didn't say it either.
There really should be a vote, Mr. Chairman, on that.
Yes, yep. Do we have a motion to continue 913 East Street, Franciscan land till 1221 at seven o'clock?
So moved. Second.
On the motion, on, on the motion, all favors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Mr. Delaney?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Mr. Fattalia?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
For December 21, we have a couple of items scheduled. So that item was scheduled for 7:05.
Yep.
Sorry, we were just moving a little quickly. I couldn't pull up my, my December 21st calendar.
Okay.
So I don't know if that needs to be re-voted, but it's just kind of. It should be 7:05.
But if it's seven, it's seven, it doesn't matter. You just take them in the order on there, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. Okay, I'll make it, I'll ask Ms. Louden to just put it as seven, which is.
Yeah, what's the last one you have on your calendar now?
Okay, so for December 21st, 181 Pine Street is listed at seven o'clock. We now have 913 East Street at seven o'clock. And then the last one is 710 at 300, it's 333 Main Street, which is Walmart. That's at 710 already. So the next available time is going to be, it's 715, but we're, just to clarify that, so, but 181 is scheduled for, they asked to continue to seven o'clock.
Say that again?
So the next hearing that we have with this one is scheduled for seven o'clock.
I understand what you're saying. I didn't hear what you said about who did you want to schedule?
I wasn't, I was just clarifying the time, so.
For the, for this, for who?
Yeah, for, for this hearing, we'll do seven o'clock. I'll make sure that's updated.
I thought that's what we were going, we said we would do.
Yes, just Alex, Mrs. Louden, she already for December 31st have planned out the meeting schedule. She had already listed seven o'clock as 181 Pine Street. But we can certainly switch that, that's fine. I just wanted to let you know that.
Yeah, if I had known that, I would make that 181 Pine Street last.
Which you can still do, so I'm sorry, I just wanted to update you on that.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
So 181 Pine Street is, then a letter was, message, an email was sent to us today to continue this till also 1221. I have a motion to put this on the agenda for the 21st of December at 715.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Mr. Delaney?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Fattalia? Chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda, it's not on your agenda, but 1880 Main Street, we received something later today for a non substantial change for 1880 Main Street Country Club. Who's presenting?
This will be me, Mr. Chairman, Jim Healy, Civil Design Consultant.
Very good.
First of all, I just want to take a minute and apologize for the, for the late request today. This was, it's, it's a, in our opinion, a very minor building addition. That we initially thought we'd probably proceed through the building department and then address it on the ASVIL. But then we thought about it and said, well, we'd just like to get you guys to chime in on it. And then we realized we need to get to the 24th December. I apologize and we'll do better going forward, but.
That, that's it, James. Do you want to put it on the screen, share it with us?
Yep, we can do that right now. So, let's see, I believe you can see my, all right, so I believe you can see my, my screen here. This is the Tewksbury Country Club. We're, we're in front of you earlier this year for a modification to an existing special permit to allow for, in addition to the Pro Shop. The idea here is that they're going to have a, they're going to have a restaurant. And we made some minor slight improvements to this. I'll flip back to this, but I just want to kind of call you in on the exact area. This essentially is a building footprint that you approved. The darker hatched area here is what was approved this summer. The area in the middle is what was existing at the time we made the application. This eight foot by 38 foot bump out off of the proposed building is, is what we're here for you tonight. So a couple of things to keep in mind. One of the reasons this came up is, is that there's these new guidelines that, that the client is trying to work within specific to indoor dining during a COVID pandemic, right? So all of those things I know, and I don't think the state really had them lined up. And now we do, and that resulted in a need for a little bit more space for the building. In addition to that, if you're familiar with the golf course, you know that as you drive toward the first tee, there's a building overhang. This portion of the, of the addition would actually be under that existing overhang. So we don't have any additional impervious surface. We don't have any, anything additional like, like any of that stuff there. So we get located beneath the, beneath the upper office area is already there. So just to kind of call you in here, this would be the view from plus or minus the first tee. And this would be the area right here that you would have the, the bump out would be. So again, apologize for the, for the late application, but we did want to put this in front of you to make sure we have.
Very good, James, very good. Anything that looks very good, nice plan? It looks like I'm looking at a miniature aspect of the Country Club itself. Board members, any discussion? Mr. Fattalia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm very familiar with the Country Club setting. I've golfed on there and I've worked top, happy the spot he's, they're adding to. I think it makes sense. It makes for a nice view from the restaurant to the, to the golf course. I could sit there, you're out close and, and, and got a nice ambiance as you're there. So I had no problems with it at all, it looks great. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Delaney?
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any problems with this.
Very good. Mr. Johnson?
All set.
Mr. Ryder?
All set.
And the chair is all set also.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to determine that this is a non substantial change.
Do we have a second? On the motion, all favors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Mr. Fattalia? Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Mr. Delaney?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to grant the non substantial change as submitted this evening.
Second.
Wait a second. On the motion, all favors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Mr. Delaney?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Fattalia? Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
All right.
Thanks, Jim.
That's the last item on the agenda. Old business?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't know if this is old business or new business, but I have a question about 2131 Main Street. We spent eight months approving a project on that site. And now all we have is a gravel pit. Is there anything going to happen with that property or is it null and void? Does anybody know what's going on there? This is down by the, the, the gas station there. Halfness gas station before it, before we're getting to right. You know, I've had a couple of people ask me and I just figured I'd bring it up. But we got a guy, we got a gravel pit.
Mr. Delaney, I don't know the answer to that. I'm not sure if any board members do, if they do speak up. If not, I will ask Anna to see if she can find out what is going on with that permit? If you would.
I guess, Mr. Chairman, I can see as they have pulled the building permit, you know, it was approved last year. So they have three eight years to act upon it. So I'll look into it and provide an update.
Very good, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
There's been no building permits pulled for that property.
I was waiting, I was waiting for that, Dawn.
And the last, the last I saw that the property was for sale.
It, yes, it is for sale, Dawn.
Yep.
There's a for sale sign on it, but why do we have a gravel pit with a for sale sign?
Your question is a good one, Jay.
I think, I think the problem, Jay, is that parcel has had a building was, that was built, fell down, then taken away. And it's been a lot of plans that have not come to fruition. And I can't speak for the people that own it.
Well, you know, the thing is, I was just wondering if he's, if he's storing his gravel or whatever from another site. You know, he's a builder.
He, he, he can't do that.
But the, but the gravel is there.
Well, I haven't seen it. I guess I don't go down.
It's not just gravel, like there's a, that has to have come from someplace because that's not just for the deterioration on the site. When it, when the site deteriorated before, it was all covered in like grass and stuff. This is literally mounds of dirt that have come from someplace. I thought someone had said at one point that it had something to do with some of the, the highway construction or something. I thought, I, maybe that part's wrong, but I thought that was where that was coming from. Because I thought there was like a construction vehicle on their path as well at one point. But it's definitely come from someplace. That's not from the site.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Mc, Mrs. McGinty? Good. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Um, Mrs. Mc, Mrs. McGinty?
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
I guess we've, uh, ascertained that, uh, there's no permits. No one knows what's going on down there, so if someone can, if you can find out from the owner of that property, what is going on, and, and they have to come in and just tell us what's going on there, because they can't be running a gravel pit out of a vacant lot.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'll, um, look into that and see if I can arrange for him to come.
Yeah, and don't have them come in on the 21st. Thank you, thank you, Anna.
You're welcome.
Um, next item, new business? Anything new?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the, uh, for the board, um.
Yes.
How many people are attending tomorrow night's Selectment Meeting? Are we all attending as a group?
Yes.
That was my last question.
Okay.
Yeah, it's virtual, you know, we're not attending.
Attending like we are tonight.
Okay, fine, very good.
In spirit.
Yeah. Mr. Fattalia, I thought Mr. Sadwick, uh, actually talked to all of you and decided, and find out that everybody was going to attend.
Well, he asked me, I answered. I didn't know what, you know, what the consensus was about everybody else, so that's why I asked the question tonight.
Yes, everybody was supposed, said they would be there, or they're, um, virtually.
Okay.
Okay. Next item, correspondence? Hearing then? Finally.
Motion to adjourn.
Well, that's nice. On the motion, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, the ayes have it. Mr. Delaney?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Fattalia?
Aye.
And, and before you leave, Anna, am I correct in saying that that meeting is 6:45 tomorrow?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's correct. It's 6:45.
Okay, very good, thank you. 6:45. Thank you and good night.